The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, June 20th, 2022, will please come to order. Good evening. For those of you who are in attendance this evening, we appreciate your being here. If you would, please take a moment to check your cellphone and make sure that it is on silent or vibrate, and we would appreciate that. For those of you who are participating remotely, good evening to you as well. We will ask that members of the public participate remotely, place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing the comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank you all for your cooperation this evening. And with that, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
For the record, all nine are present in the chambers.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of June 6th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections? Then hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President, we have the presentation of... From celebrating the 50th anniversary with Sister City Shirojiri.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford, please come forward.
Thank you. It's great to be here, and it's awesome to be here with our delegation that accompanied me to our sister city. I do have a short video we made with just some different photographs and clips from the trip. I figured I'd open with that before I kind of talk about what we got out of the exchange, just because I think it'll set the mood for kind of the atmosphere of what the trip was like. Is it possible to, like, dim the lights?
May I ask when you went?
So, we were in our sister city from June 2nd to June 11th.
Okay. Thank you, Jake.
Mm-hmm.
No action required.
Thank you. The record will reflect that we have received information with regard to both of those items. Report a special committee. There is none this evening. So we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. As from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I-one light industrial to R-one single-family residential, one-eight, one-six, West Sixth Street.
Proposed ordinance twenty-two-two dash fourteen will be assigned to the land use planning committee.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash fifteen and ordinance amending chapter one fifty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, is from time to time amended. Commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C-one to R-two to repurpose a salon and residential unit for two-family residential, ten-twenty-three, West Sixth Street.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash fifteen will be assigned to the land use planning committee.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, is from time to time. Amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility as it permitted use in an existing building at one-four-three-five University Drive Court.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash sixteen will be assigned to the land use planning committee.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash seventeen and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, is from time to time amended. Commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I-one and I-two to C-three city center commercial to match adjacent zoning and permit future C-three uses. Bacon Lots, North Hill Street, west, between West Front Street and West First Street.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash seventeen will be assigned to the land use planning committee.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. As from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen six, sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C-one and C-seven to R-three multifamily residential to convert existing hotel into a multifamily apartment building and construct an additional. Two-seven, five-four, Link Waste.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash eighteen will also be assigned to the land use planning committee. Resolutions.
Resolution R-two, two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen. A resolution of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at four-one-two-five Grape Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. This is used variance to allow microblading service within multi-tenant, commercial strip, strip centers, C-one district, four-one-two-five Grape Road.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed resolution twenty-two-two dash thirteen. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would? Come forward to the podium or unmute, unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Is there anyone participating this evening who wishes to speak with respect to forty-one, twenty-five Grape Road? Mr. Compton.
Mr. President, I'd like to postpone this resolution until there is someone here who can speak on its behalf.
Second. Do you have a date as, as, as a question perhaps to the next regularly scheduled council meeting?
The next scheduled council meeting would be perfect.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to postpone the public hearing on proposed resolution twenty-two-two dash thirteen until our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The matter will be postponed until our next council meeting.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, declaring dormant funds.
Thank you. This is the public hearing on proposed resolution twenty-two-two dash fourteen. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Rebecca Maguire, City Controller. In preparation for the state requiring us to change our fund numbering system, it makes sense for us to clean up. A number of accounts, approximately thirty-five funds, actually, funds that are no longer in use and have zero balances. So this allows us to do that and move forward with the state's new numbering system for the funds.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Maguire? Thank you, Becky. Is there anyone else physically present this evening who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine-two-zero. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, authorizing electronic funds transfers.
Thank you. This is the public hearing on proposed resolution twenty-two-two dash fifteen. Mrs. Maguire.
Good evening again. It's best practice as vendors require electronic funds transfers to have a resolution in place that's been approved. We currently do electric, electronic funds transfers for taxes, insurance claims and such, but there's more vendors that would like that and require that. And as you can see by the resolution, we follow all the same internal controls as we do for, if we are cutting checks. So it's best practice to have this in place. So as we determine certain vendors require electronic funds transfer and we approve it, that we file this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller? Thank you, Becky. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution, who is physically present, if you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone in the council chambers this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mrs. DeMaye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to the twenty-first century.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine-two-zero. Resolution R-two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving the request for the Indiana State Board of Accounts to examine the financial statements prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting practices, GAAP.
Thank you. This is the public hearing on proposed resolution twenty-two-two dash sixteen. Once again, Mrs. Maguire.
Thank you. This is required by the state every year now for cities who are under the population of seventy-five thousand. If we wish to have a GAAP audit, we need to have this resolution in place.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward to the podium. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Then is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine-two-zero.
Ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash zero-nine, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code five dash thirteen dash nine dash five.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council, city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two, twenty-two-two dash zero-nine, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll now move into the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty-two-two dash zero-nine. Mrs. Maguire.
Good evening again. This is a required ordinance by the state, so I am able to, gives me authorization to invest in banking institutions outside of our local county. I can invest statewide and I do so with the assistance of Baker Tilly, our banking advisory firm.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller? Thank you again. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Then is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The proposed ordinance passes nine-two-zero. Proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash ten, an ordinance transferring funds for the motor vehicle highway restrictive fund of the city of Mishawaka to the local road and bridge matching grant fund of the city of Mishawaka for the calendar year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and ordinance appropriating additional funds for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. This is in the motor vehicle highway fund to the local bridge fund in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-five cents, and I do have proofs of publication.
Thank you very much. The record will so reflect. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash ten, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now open the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty-two-two dash ten. Mrs. Maguire.
Good evening again. So we were awarded the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-five cents for our community crossing grant. We must match that out of our motor, motor vehicle highway restricted fund. And this transfer moves that money to the local bridge and road matching grant fund. And that total is one million, nine hundred and fifty dollars, three, three hundred, I'm sorry, one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, which must be appropriated to spend. So we match the grant award.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller? Thank you again. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine-two-zero. Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash eleven and ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the reduction of funds for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. This is in the cumulative capital development fund.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council, city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash eleven, report that they have examined said matter and in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty-two-two dash eleven. Mrs. Maguire.
Good evening again. Tonight there is a reduction in the approved budget of the CCD fund. This fund, we use exclusively for information technology, software, hardware and such. We don't leave a lot of cash reserves in this fund and this fund actually, the tax rate erodes year after year until it's reestablished. So with the little bit of tweaking with circuit breaker and the tax rate eroding, we came up short approximately nineteen thousand dollars. And what this reduction does is set it to our budget to match what the state approved. And you'll see later in the evening, we'll have an additional to make up that difference.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Then is there any council member who wishes to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine-two-zero. Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twelve and ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the expenditure of additional funds for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. This is additional fund appropriation in CEDIT in the amount, total amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, thirty-six dollars, and I do have proof of publication.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council, city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred this, uh, referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twelve, report that they have examined said matter and in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twelve. Mrs. Maguire.
Hello again. As mentioned in the previous ordinance, we had to reduce the budget in the cumulative capital development fund. And so we are increased and we are making that amount available out of our CEDIT fund. So the IT department stays whole in their budget of seven hundred thousand dollars. So there, that is the additional for the nineteen thousand, thirty-six dollars. I'm also requesting an additional budget appropriation in the consulting line. We've had a number of items come up this year. We were, we've been working on our website with our new vendor hearings. We've done a salary study and also when we, the state switched to outsourcing our financial statements. So that's, that has cost us a little bit extra in the consulting fees with Baker Tilly. So working with a new outside firm rather than state board of accounts, there's been a little extra legwork. So all these things added up, so we needed to boost that budget line.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine-two-zero. Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen and ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the expenditure of additional funds for the year beginning December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. This is in civil city personnel services in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, and I do have proof of publication.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Oh, sorry, that's me. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash thirteen, report that they have examined said matter and that they're in opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty-two-two dash thirteen. Mrs. Maguire.
This is my last one on the agenda. So as you probably recall, last year during our budget ordinance time, a budget needs to be passed, needs three read, three readings, three meetings. And a salary ordinance needs two meetings. Civil city salaries were adjusted during budget time. So there was not enough meetings to increase the budget to go from two percent salaries to five percent salaries. So what this ordinance does is correct the budget at the additional funds in the twenty-two budget to cover those approved salaries for the twenty-two budget.
Thank you. We will have to check the archives, but I think you may have just set a record for most consecutive presentations to the council in the history of the city of Mishawaka, so.
It'll be determined if this was a good plan or not.
Thank you for your work on all of these items. About that, are there any additional questions for the controller? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo Mr. Hicksonbaugh's comments. That was a lot of work. So thanks for putting all that together, you and your team.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine-two-zero.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Hearing none, then we will move into.
Came from out of nowhere.
Mr. Mayor?
President, council members, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to report about something you may have already heard on the news today, but we had a significant water main break on North Main Street, Mishawaka. Uh, happened sometime around noon. We got the call, the reports, standing water. I happened to be out there right about the time it was, uh, it was occurring, uh, water had heaved the pavement, um, like a wet paper bag. It was literally seeping out every crack for, uh, for fifty to a hundred feet or so. Uh, it caused some pretty significant standing water. Uh, the road had buckled in excess of a foot in some cases. Uh, received a full response from the city of Mishawaka, multiple departments, uh, from water, sewer, fire department, central services, uh, and others, engineering. Uh, and, uh, so crews got to work immediately. Uh, they have, uh, they had to insert a new valve, uh, in which case they had to dig down five feet toward this eight-inch water main is located. Uh, they got the valve, uh, inserted and functional. They have since located the location of the break. Uh, kind of resembled an archaeological dig, uh, but, uh, they have found, uh, the failure. It was substantial. Uh, water service has been interrupted for about two, two blocks along Main Street. Uh, the repairs, uh, will go on around the clock, but water service should be restored in a, about two hours or so. Uh, so our crew has done an outstanding job. Uh, the road is, um, damaged beyond repair. Uh, really from sidewalk to sidewalk, so it will require a new section of pavement. Uh, that work still has to be assessed, but will be ongoing from tonight going forward. So for the next few days, uh, Main Street is not passable. Uh, so we encourage all of our, uh, motoring public to use McKinley and Grape to get around. Uh, and also fur to avoid that area. It's only open to local traffic. But, uh, uh, just want to share with you not only the news of the day here, but how proud I am of our crew, uh, for just really going into action immediately and, uh, taking care of that. That's the difference between cities that are well-run and cities, in some cases, that, that struggle to buy, to provide basic utilities. And ours provides them at an exceptionally high level.
Thank you for the update and please pass along our appreciation to all involved for their proper response to this as well. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Mayor, when we have a, a, a damage like that, it's not caused by an act of God, is there any insurance coverage for any of that at all?
Well, it's all city property for the most part. We'll make it better than we found it. I can promise you that. So, uh, but it's, you know, it's one of those things at our expense. And we have, we have a budgeted amount that, uh, you know, takes into account that these things happen and, and so, uh, and while they've happened before, this is the biggest one that most of us have ever seen.
Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, uh, do we have a timeline and when it might be fixed? I know, I know they just got out there. They just are still assessing the situation, but is there any type of?
So most important is to repair the water main. That should happen within the next couple hours or so, and we'll start to restore service tonight to residents. That's the most important, uh, you know, thing that needs to happen is restoring water to our residents. Uh, after that, then we have to, uh, get the road crew in. Obviously, uh, you know, curbs were damaged, sidewalk was damaged, uh, plus the, the bed of the road. Those things don't happen immediately. So it's going to take several days to repair all of that.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted on timelines.
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I think that you answered my other questions. Really, you don't know. I know there's residents that live along Main Street that now have no way out of their driveway. And I'm just curious as to how, I'm sure that accommodations will be made as quickly as possible, so.
So we, uh, we did make accommodations already and removed cars out of the. So we, we did make accommodations already and removed cars out of the most impacted driveways so that they can at least get to where they need to go. There's a camping trailer and a camping trip.
Saw that. I saw that on the news, yeah.
Yeah.
But he seemed okay, you know.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
Yeah. Well, and, and our commitment is that we will restore any of the damage that has been caused, even up into property areas.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll restore the service. That's.
Thank you.
Top priority.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor, for that presentation. I know you had mentioned that you identified the failure. I'm sure it's still being assessed. But is there anything you can pinpoint where perhaps maybe from the manufacturer side of the valves or pipes or?
If it's manufacturer, that's been in the ground since about the nineteen fifties. We probably won't find them around. But, you know, we have had a couple of breaks of that main on Main Street there. Just happened to be the worst possible location. But, you know, not real sure, other than it's a seventy-year-old pipe. And it holds up pretty well, but as far as service goes right now, we're seeing a lot of service, a lot of demand for water with the heat and with the, you know, demand from our citizens. But also, you know, temperature fluctuations tend to create some of these issues too. Don't know the cause of it, but it, it was a pretty massive breach.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for his honor? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? All right. Thank you. Now, we will move into unfinished business, of which there is none. New business. Is there any new business to come before the council?
Mr. President, I, I ask if we hold for just a moment. We had someone come into the council chambers and I wonder if it's someone from Salon Studio Suites. It is not. I.
Was worth a try, Mr. Compton.
Was worth a try. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make an announcement that we had our neighborhood twin branch meeting this past week. Very well attended. Wanted to give special thanks to the Hazens for providing the food and delicious cookies and, and chips. But mainly wanted to thank our guest speaker, Mr. Mayor, Dave Wood. Did an outstanding job as usual. I know the, the residents and the attendees learned several new details of what, what's to expect in the near future, as did I. I always learn something new. So thank you again for providing your time and information.
Thank you. Mr. Emmons?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to mention our last neighborhood meeting that we had well, well-attended for Ambassador Donely. He gave an excellent presentation, both humorous and down-to-business and that. And I think everybody that was there enjoyed it. The mayor, our mayor was there, Debbie was there and that. And I guess they, everybody had a good laugh at times. There was some seriousness in the, in the presentation and that. And Mr. Ambassador Donely was not only there, but with his wife. And a lot of friends were there, past friends, new friends and that. And I'm sorry that the council wasn't there to see the presentation and to meet Mr. Ambassador Donely. I know some of you already know him, but he did a fabulous job. And I want to thank everybody that was there, especially our mayor and Debbie for that. And we had eight dozen donuts and they all went. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business to come before the council? Madam Clerk?
You wanted to change your council meeting date?
I'm just getting to that. Due to some scheduling issues on the part of the council, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to change the date for our second regular meeting in July from Monday, July eighteenth to Monday, July twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to change our second regular meeting in July from Monday, July eighteenth to Monday, July twenty-fifth. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The meeting, the meeting will be changed until Monday. Our second meeting will take place on Monday, July twenty-fifth. And just a reminder for those in attendance and who may be viewing the meeting, due to the Fourth of July holiday, under our standard procedure, our next regularly scheduled council meeting will take place on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at seven PM here in the chambers. So in case we don't see everyone before then, July fifth.
You said twenty.
That would be a problem.
But we are meeting on the.
Tuesday, July fifth, will be our first council meeting in July. And Monday, July twenty-fifth, will be our second council meeting in July, both at seven PM here in the council chambers. Now that we have that confusing matter out of the way, any other new business to come before the council? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.